Members of the council, members of the board, and members of the committee on health and safety. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a summary of my thoughts. Thank you very much. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. The last time this was on, we actually asked for this one to be heard or heard through the minutes because of the maintenance and things that actually weren't on the day. I think as you can see, it's quite an explanatory plan this time. Do you have any comments on it?
Yes, I agree completely. Much better than I understand. I think I mustn't understand what exactly is to be built now and whether we can get the application.
I'm concerned with the application. Thank you very much. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. This is the report, I believe, on the outcome of the allowance consultant actually attended in this course. Obviously, we've had time to read it since it's been delivered to you. Do our recommendations on the area? Any comments later?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's obvious from the minutes of this allowance society, I mean, that it's obviously worked by a thing, our officers attend in their best practice, kind of supporting the rest of the region and also the other councils, I would say, problems, because I always worry about the paper problems. So I'm very happy with the proposal and I will move the recommendations in the report.
That's right. Chair, notice that it was Mr. Clinton that attended on behalf of the council. I see the consultants are pursuing this. We will have a permanent number of staff attend these meetings in the future.
Oh, yes, that's the intention. There's been a member of the council on there. Have you heard of him?
Right.
I've been with members. I have six members here. This is the meeting that we had back, I believe, in the summer regarding the sale of land or sale of pieces of land. I'm confused by those, yeah. This is a report, it's actually a good report, certainly managed. Do you want to just go further this bit more?
Yeah, so you just purpose of the report is to provide members with an update on the proposal of the land, the sale of the land by Durham County Council of Murrayburne Allowments. Members will recall that there was a meeting held at Murrayburne Allowments on the 15th of August to the ordain with Karen Mitchell, the officer from Durham County Council. It was raised at the site meeting that in the view of the town council, the land at Murrayburne is the property of the town council and as such Durham County Council should not be considered a settlement without our approval. Also that previous land sold within this location by Durham County Council, in our view, the property of the town council. The county council afterward will investigate the ownership of the land with the Durham County Council legal team and confirm their view in writing to us. The town council have emailed the Durham County Council officer asking that this investigation be taken and also for that if it is proved that the land is under the ownership of Durham County Council, that adequate vehicle access for allowance holders and the county council have access to the allowance through vehicle access, and should any sale be progressed, then the land would have a restriction on it ensuring that it could only be used for garden purposes and not for building. The term of position is that I've emailed the officer for feedback and I've telephoned her as well. And Karen has confirmed to me that there's been no progress made whatsoever either on the sale or on the identification of ownership of the land. And it assured me that progress would be made with immediate effect. I'm proposing that we write again formally to Durham County Council requesting the position statement regarding the ownership and the sale of the land and recommending that members give approval for that to be received.
Chair, come on, sir.
I guess, Chair, I attended this meeting along with a number of other councils. At the time, it was scheduled that Karen would come back to the town council and I think members thought that that would be rather quick for her to come back. Given that four months has elapsed since this site visit, I don't think that we should now put a timescale on. But we said to them, Durham County Council, we do need an answer. Preferably that answer before the end of this year.
Yeah, thank you very much again, Councilwoman Anderson, this happened now back in August, the site maintenance. Obviously, our priority is the town council is to make sure that our land isn't sold by some of you to the law. But we've also got the issue of places that haven't already been sold and we need to make sure we didn't own in first place as well. And I think that's the bit that is time sensitive there. I think the proposal in the report is sound and I think what Councilwoman Anderson says is great, we should get them to a deadline on that. So I'll move the recommendations in the report for that edition.
So also with members' approval, we have standardised on this to get it moved to the past. Say that, Chair. Yeah, I'll confirm it. Thank you very much. Thank you, you attended. That's your allowance meeting tonight. I would just like to wish you all a Happy Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you mustn't be ahead of it. Thank you.
So what are your little name?
Member of the House.
You, my honourable colleagues.
Yes, I understand, yes.
I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. Chair. I would like to make a brief summary of my thoughts. We have the Assistant Chief Fire Officer present, Mr. Colin Beach. Would you like to call Colin and give the presentation?
Thank you. Now, this screen is being seen here. I get why the guests are going to question us. I think I'll use myself here, of course. Stomach, yes. I don't want to mess around with the presenter. Anyone have different settings, watching of...
From both the grey United.
Thank you very much, Chair. We invite you to see how our strategic plan, I'm sure, certainly when it comes to the last proposal we've put in there for the consulting on it, we may have to take forward, is probably a pretty difficult. But we've already gone through the plan itself. Just to give you an idea of what the strategic plan is, it's always been known as the Integrated Management Plan. In fact, from 2003 to 2004, after the last set of industrial actions, to be honest, the government brought across where each fire service must produce an integrated management plan every year. We call it now the strategic plan because it does set out the strategic objectives for the service. And the idea is, it basically strikes how we reserve the people from Durham and the borough of Darlington. Some of the key risks and the challenges that face by us as a service and the risks obviously to the communities, and then how we intend to allocate our resources to meet those risks. But if I'm truthful, since 2010, since really austerity measures kicked in, everyone that I have a clear question for our services in general has been focused on how can you manage reducing funding going forward. And ours has gone different to that. I think ours is probably slightly different or significantly to contribute to a lot of other services is that our plans that we've implemented and what we plan to take going forward are all about introducing savings without affecting community risk. So our aim, our service transformation aim has always been to make ourselves lean, cut back from the back office where possible and don't affect the frontline, which has been critical to us to be felt. That's the part of the communities who are really about customers help and power paymasters. That's what they were after. And from 2010, what we've done is made the saving of over three and a half million pounds since 2010 until the end of this year, 2015. Now, when you consider we had a budget in 2010 of around about 31 million, that's a significant chunk of savings that we've had to make. And it works out roughly around about 25% of the government grant has been reduced for us. But as I say, we've made those savings, we've made those savings without a reduction in the number of fire appliances or a reduction in the number of stations within the county. I'm wondering where we made most of our savings from, as I say, protecting the frontline has always been a focus of our... We just, we know now going forward that funding reduction is ongoing to continue and they're likely to continue irrespective of what happens after that, after the... They may be distributed differently depending on what happens there, but you know, austerity measures will continue for a period of time. And our predictions based on information just being given is that we will have to save about 33.6 million over the coming three years. Now, it was difficult taking three and a half million pounds over 31 million pounds, which if we take another, now we're going to take out a further 3.6 million pounds. So it is challenging and it is harder to do these things now without affecting the frontline to be formed. So just to put this through where we don't, I mean, we've just a number of our non-uniform staff, which is our back office staff, if you like, by 29% or will do work by the time we introduce certain measures in here. Our full-time staff, which is our firefighter or our full-time firefighters by themselves, have been reduced by 19% over that time. We haven't had to make redundancies with the uniform staff because it's just natural ways to retire members, etc. We've managed our changes in line with the legal profile, the retirement profile, as we call it, always trying to avoid the redundancies. We have made changes to operational staffing systems and arrangements to bring about savings. So for example, people would have thought, you know, the traditional view is the firefighter on the station, the work in the evening, the place to do, there's no smoking tables on stations now, and then goes a bed in the evening. That has changed within our county. What we need is remove quite a significant number of force from headquarters and track that away from the station. So to protect the frontline, the stations will have work, they're in the operational response, they're doing community safety activities now, we're just doing the safety plan. They have to do legislative fire safety inspections and then the modern testing equipment, etc., inputting and data. So we're doing that on the stations now. That's allowed us to protect the stations while reducing people in the back office. We have done some collaboration on the safety programme with other services for a number of years now. We've had an ambulance service on our fire station at Darlington. And recently last year, we've got the police onto the fire station in Newton Acre. So it's actually John Cleese in the fire station, in fact, for true, for sure. We have more floor space within the station now than actually fire service do in our Newton Acre side. And then just for good budget management, we've been able to bring in some of those savings as well. And just to go through, just to give you an idea of the number of our staff total is coming down from 682 and at the end of this process, as we go through, it becomes now to 575. The majority of the staff have come from the non-uniform, all-time staff down by 19%. The one area we touched is the retained duty firefighters. These are the unqualified fighters. This is what had at Spinning Mall, when we're in the town centre, or close to the town centre here, and what the majority of staff at the Spinning Mall station are now. So they've got their normal occupations, they've been working wherever they do, and when they're either at work or at home, as long as they're in a firing response time in the station, then they can respond in the station to answer the emergency call. They're then coming for so many hours a week doing train to make sure they're in the main compartment, not employing there 24/7 as we go through. Very valuable resources we've got, as I say, haven't reduced in numbers and no one's actually reducing the numbers of those. So just to give you an idea of where the savings have got to come from, as you say, this year, we had no deficit within the county because of the savings we've introduced. As you go forward, small deficit within 15, 16, quite easy manageable, but then it creeps up to 2.6 million by 17, 18. In fact, it is three and a half million, we've already identified vacant posts that we won't fill, contracts that we won't renew, new service arrangements that we changed to bring out needs to save for that. So already identified 900,000 pounds for the savings. So we've still got that 2.6 million pounds that we have to save. They have predictive figures because clearly we don't know the exact number that's going through, but they are based on best assessments that we have now and information going through, etc. So to bridge that gap, we've put together, we've put together a number of things, we're working through income generation, we've established our own community interest cookie now, we're building a training school at Holborn, training second Holborn, where we're going to train commercial organisations, well, there's other fire services in the portal, but we're bringing in income. And that should offset some of the savings we have to make. But there are some things that we will have to introduce that will cause some reductions in income, in funding, around the moment. So the first proposal we've got, this might propose to consult on, and I've got some consultation surveys there, if you can fill in, which would be really helpful. If you're proposing to share all of this, the ambulance service, further than what we're doing now, that's obviously the site of Newton Acre. But we have plans in place to advance, that's also a sign of Crook and the section, and they're the priorities that we're dealing with. We sought some funding for the VCRG over this and actually we've got the funding, 3.8 million pounds, to build what is the first known as a quad station in the country. So it's got our cells, the police, the ambulance, and the TSD and the UDA map and search and message room there as well. So it's an excellent facility that we're going to be building in Barnet Castle. So not without any issues because, yes, everyone hunted in Barnet Castle, but no one gets a salary once it went across to their house. It's a fairly, you know, it's a big building, we put it in there. So we've gone through consultation of the morning. The funding basically for these, we're successful this round, but we're still talking to the ambulance and the police to see how we can progress what's through. And in fact, the police are likely to be in a big career of station in Crook. If I'm truthful, slightly annoying to you, just from the new fire station in Crook, we asked the police if they want to come into it, at the start, through the planning phase, through the designing phase, no, 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 we don't do it. We built the building now, this is from Crook, maybe the Crook company. So it will look a bit silly to give them an extension on the side of it just after we build a new one. But if that's safe, the place we've been incrementing to our cells, it gives a more integrated service where interoperability between two services will improve, better response to emergency incidents, then yes, it's worth taking forward, which is slightly annoying. It wasn't done previous to that. Second proposal that we're looking at again, not without controversy in certain areas, is to expand the number of firefighters so they respond to medical emergencies. But I must emphasise, this is in support of the ambulance service. We are doing this in conjunction with the ambulance service, we are not doing it as an alternative to the ambulance service. We are currently running a trial at the moment in the Dales, so at Milton Teasdale Town and Barnet Castle. The firefighters there, the vast majority have been trained by the ambulance service to respond to medical emergencies involving trauma, whether they're going out to or pay the weather costs, head injuries, difficult breathing, etc. So they go out where the ambulance service know that they can't make their attendance time. It's category or a red category, it's meant to be there in any case. If they can't make that response, they will mobilise our firefighters after that incident to deal with it. And there are a number of initiatives that have gone out and actually, you know, it has saved people's lives. And the incident I just saw in the Northern Egg Bowl there wasn't actually amazing to co-responder, but it was actually just during recent, just at the beginning of November, during the recent industrial action, where there was a council employee actually walking across from the Durham County Council town hall, crossing in front of the fire station, and there was pickets outside the fire station and it collapsed. An attack, stopped breathing, and it's hard stuff. So between the pickets and the officers who were working there, we got a resuscitated guy, worked on him for roughly about 20 minutes, the ambulance came, transported him into hospital, he had an operation, and he's back home now on intensive purposes. You know, an example of the level of training that our staff have, they weren't responders, co-responders, they were part of the trial. But we train our firefighters in the same standards that the ambulance service train for the co-responder. It's just they have to train them for community workers. So we are, as I say, running the trial there. We get paid for that, so obviously that brings income in, which helps to reduce the necessity for us to make reductions going forward on our spending. But the benefit to the community of getting someone out there who can actually preserve life until the medical professional turns up is invaluable. And as I say, the reality is that we use more and more in the Dales area and go to incidents and actually save lives there. The proposal three relates to what we call our ALP, or Area Level Platform, which is one of our large and people easily described as a silent snorkel, like a lodge. Hydraulic platform that has a height reach of about 133 metres. And we have two of those in the county, really excellent machines, not only used for saving lives, we're actually using them for saving lives in confined spaces below ground, because they'd use an anchor pod, use them as a crane above the ground. But the vast majority of their usage is used in large building fires, and they're used obviously to extinguish the fire, not to damage, obviously to help us to save firefighters if the building is in a dangerous position. We have two of those within the county, one situated in Durham station, one situated in the Darlington station. Back in 2011, to make the funding costs we have to face with there, we changed the staffing arrangements at Durham station on there, removing the firefighters that were staffing that permanently. So what happened, with natural reasons, the numbers went down, what we now have at Durham is two appliances, crewed by all-time firefighters, full-time firefighters, one by RDS crew. If they obviously need, the firefighter jump from one machine onto the other. Saves approximately 300,000 pounds by doing it. The idea is you're going to do that in Darlington as well, and it's saving eight firefighters' posts as we go forward, but it's still maintaining response. And to have two area level platforms in a services size is really good in this day and age. People have made the cuts around the, not just around this region, but across the country. We have always invested in them, a number of years ago, there are 700,000 pound machines and they're invaluable to us. They have a life expectancy of 15 to 20 years. If we can stack those effectively, then they are going to provide and really affect the communities' response for the people of Camden and Darlington. The next one, the number one, is the reduction of response firefighters. What we have is we have the all-time firefighters on the appliances, we've got the RDS firefighters on the appliances, but for the larger or complex incidents where people were trapped or there were three, two, three, four calls, chemical incidents, etc., we have response officers. And there are beyond six response officers on the night spread across our county. Our proposal is to reduce the number of response officers. We have reduced the number of firefighters through natural ways into different staffing arrangements, we've reduced the number of non-uniform managers and people within headquarters. It's only right that we look at everywhere across the service, so we're going to reduce the number of officers as well. We don't have many in our service, we have 30 officers above those that work on a station. So it's not a huge amount we've got, but we're talking about reducing those by around four to see if we can make the same as we need to make as we go forward. The issue with that, for anything, is that the officers don't just sit in the car waiting to respond to an incident. They're merely working in risk, maybe the training manager, maybe the district manager looking after the set field district of Spinning Mall and Setfield Station. They have a day job to do, so we will have to do a reorganisation of service to make sure us on the rise with airwork as well. So it's not just the emergency service response, it's the important part. And finally, the one that's affecting in Spain, and it's at the back of the presentation for a reason, because it's the back of our transformation plan we're introducing, if we're introducing. And this is looking at how we crew the first fire engine in Spinning Mall station. And to give you some background of how Spinning Mall station works, when we moved out to the new station back in 2010, we put a whole-time crew, day crewing, so the whole-time crew, crewed the first appliance, there are two fire engines at Spinning Mall fire station. The first appliance is crewed by full-time firefighters, Monday to Friday, eight till five. So if they're on the station, there's an immediate response, they're straight there and they're out. The second appliance is crewed by RDS firefighters, so they've got five minutes to get to the station before they respond that way. Outside of the Monday to Friday, eight till five, then the first appliance is crewed by the Spinning Mall RDS as well, because we have about 60, you know, 18 in one one's Spinning Mall fire station. So there's sufficient RDS there to crew the two appliances. But what we've been looking at is to save the money that we need to save, we've gone through various options, and there are things we can do to save money that aren't, that we don't have to come out and sort, as I say, contract management, etc. But we've had to look now at other things about staffing appliances can bring the costs down and what's the least risky option we can use. Because Spinning Mall's appliance is crewed by the whole-time, just eight till five on the Friday, that looks about 27% of the time it's whole-time. The rest of the time, I said, 3% of the time, it's staffed by RDS. So removing the whole-time and staffing it purely with RDS is the least risky option we've got for any of our operational appliances. Having said that, and professional firefighters, when we do that, there will be an increase in the response times. Because I've already explained, unless the Irish from the station train, they can get from their home or place to go there for the firefighters. So there will be an increase in response times. So it will increase the risk. The least risk is among them, there is that increase in risk. And it does sit comfortable with myself or other professional officers doing the service, to be honest. And members on the fire authority, and we've already spoken with the councillor, prosper over this and has expressed his concerns about this proposal. And rightly so, and you know, it does increase the risk, I can emphasise that, but it is the least risky. So what our proposal is, is that we're looking at this, but we're also looking at additional ways we can save the money without having to implement this. Because normally this affects Spinning Mall as well. That appliance, because it's staffed during the day, it isn't available to cause other incidents. And last year, it probably spent 44% of its time responding to incidents in other areas, because we don't have a huge amount of fire appliances in the county of Darlington. And if we have an RDS appliance and the majority of our appliances are staffed by RDS firefighters, they can not be on the run, because the person, firefighters are at work, they've got family commitments, etc. You can't guarantee the appliance being on the run. You can guarantee the whole-time was on the run. So the Spinning Mall appliance is very valuable to us, not just for Spinning Mall, but providing a cover, another part of the service as well. So for that reason, yes, it's the least risky option, so we are putting proposals, we are even committing to the fire, and we will look to seek alternative ways of actually saving the equivalent amount of money, so that we don't have to introduce this option. Said all that, what I would say as well, the 2.6 million or the 3.5 million that we've already made is our prediction of where the funding costs are going to be over the three years of the strategic plan. Then when we actually get the figures, the next, the next combination, Spinning Mall, we could end up where the reductions we get to make, no one knows by what we think, and that would be absolutely fantastic. But conversely, we're all aware, the level of funding that we could get could be a lot worse than what we see. So not only could we be looking at, then the alternatives that we sought to stop doing this may have to be produced as well. But as I say, this is, if we do have to introduce this, this is in 17, 18 of the plan, so we've got plenty of time to try and start some of the ways of doing it. plan, so we've got plenty of time to try and sort some of the ways of doing it. Even if you have to do that, there are other alternatives to us, in which is that we can move operational firefighters that work at headquarters, doing day jobs, being risk free, fire safety etc, and you can base them at certain times at Spennymore Station, so they can actually provide a response as well. Because we are to maintain our competence to do good operations, and so it's not an issue of them then riding the lines and going out. So there's lots of options that we're looking at to take this forward. There are the options to set fire, which we're consulting on. We hope, because this is the first time, maybe we've affected this on operational response, we do an extended consultation on this, we start on the 1st of September, and we finish on Thursday the 4th. We're going to finish on the 1st of December, but obviously this is the town council meeting on the 2nd, and Dallyington Borough Council, we present this on the 4th, so we'll get a extended consultation before. Any other consultation date that comes after that, clearly we'll take note of it. Open to the Fire Authority, we present the Fire Authority 17th of December on the consultation outcomes. So if anything we say really prior to that, then it will be noted, we won't just say, oh, it's too late now, we will take those forward. But I have also a consultation questionnaire for the FBU today, and I appreciate you coming in, just quickly five questions on that, if you take yes or no, you can make comments. And if I can take them as well tonight, or if I can get them picked up tomorrow, then I will at least give that those into the consultation outcomes. So happy to take any questions. I notice we've got two, I'm going to take them, which would be a good time.
We've just spoken of proposal five, as we've said, with the number of new house crews going on in Spennymore, plus 10% increase in population, our family risk assessment comes up with a public community service report, because as I've already said, it could affect response, population of service now.
There's, when we have risk, and we do monitor risk, we take our data, everything that we attempt to monitor on our roof profile, the demographics of areas which we obviously get from census data. And fires, not all fire, but obviously the majority, there are occurred certain types of areas, certain types of housing etc. Generally, new housing, and I know Spennymore is extending quite quickly, the risk of fires in new housing is less than it is in old stock housing. So actually, when you regenerate areas or you create new housing, generally, actually the number of fire incidents do drop down.
Sorry, but the population goes up, you know, it's the old property still on ten percent, so the number of people increases.
Yes, the number of people increases, the properties where the risk is, tends to stay the same, you know, we have a profile, if you like, of all risk, people who are likely to be at risk, having said that, or anyone here that has a fire, so we're just happening to their. When you map and you model and you look at how many incidents across the surface, even though the population is going up, the number of calls is actually decreasing across our service, quite significantly at the moment, because we do a lot of prevention and protection activity. The vast majority of the time, operational crew spend now is coming in on community safety and allegedly commercial fire safety advice. I think in the Spennymore area alone, last year, I think there's been just over 1,000 or just over 1,000 fire safety chairs, to give people advice, get smoke lamps in the halls. So actually, that type of initiative, which we introduced in 2003, that we deliver around around 18,000 a year now in the county, has driven down the number of fires that we're experiencing. It's still, there is still an increase, I accept that.
Thank you. Right, David?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, thanks for your presentation, my colleague, and thanks to the Fire Authority for a very comprehensive consultation on this, and to ourselves, the third time I've had a presentation over the last few weeks, and places, David, from a different officer each time, so I've got slightly different take on it. I think what we need to realise, Dave, is that like ourselves, and like the other areas of local government, the fire service themselves, where they have massive cuts from government as well, the financial pressures that you showed on the first few slides there are significant. And we can't go on looking at any sector of public service, but we've got massive cuts coming from central government and expect the same rate of service. And what comes to that is the same is right, we've got populations going up, we've got service going down. And so you're like, oh, what you've got to do is, you've got yourself between a rock and a hard place, and you need to make the best of the financial package that you've got. And that said, obviously, we're Spennymore Town Council, and as I know the Spennymore County councils have said, we're going to look after this part of the turf. And I think our opinion is that we really don't want to lose that service in Spennymore. But equally, if you don't lose it in Spennymore, you're probably going to have to lose it somewhere else in the county. So I think, I appreciate you being between a rock and a hard place, but our priority is obviously, don't do anything with this Spennymore before you need to. And other than that, I suppose we should all hope for change in government in May, because your cuts might get stopped, and might not be planned at the point, but at the end of the year.
Commissioner Whitehead?
Sorry, Chair, can I perhaps answer that? Yes. What we will, what we actually do, we have a couple of ideas in our mind, really some things we need more research into. And when we say to the Fire Authority on the 17th of December, what we say is that we hope to bring some other proposals to the Fire Authority in June of next year, give us time to look through, which we can generally, hopefully, it's not guaranteed, save them the services this, and then we won't have to, won't have to do it. It does affect other parts of our leadership response, but it doesn't affect the actual staffing of a frontline appliance. And I think that's a big thing, that's a very important thing affecting the frontline. It's whether we can get that, by changing that, we have to reconfine it in terms of where we have resources quite a bit to achieve that, but it's something that we are looking at doing. If we can do it, that's absolutely fantastic, just on the flip side of that, if the level of cuts coming even greater than anticipated, we might have the one, that alternative, and the ones on top of that, that's the problem, that's the issue. As I say, I think on track record in 2010, compared to current, and now we're dealing with services, and they're all across the nation, we've not put out, reduced the fire station, reduced the pumping appliance, there's still two times a day, I appreciate the asset we're doing. We haven't produced any, we haven't increased the response standard from many clients at all. And that's why that's very, very difficult for me, as a professional firefighter, to sit here, because that's the first time I've been doing the transposition since 2010, and actually had to perform the force like that, even though we're still fighting in the background of places preventing us doing that.
Commissioner Whitehead?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. With regard to the taking away full-time members of staff for the Spennymore option, what guarantees have you actually got, that you, obviously you can draw in on part-time people? I mean, if you're going to have a situation, I presume that these people are working, it's not necessarily able to service the fire engines. So, I mean, what consultation have you also had with the unions as regards to this?
We have spoken to the FBU on this, and they obviously raise their concerns as well, because to them, it is still reducing them the frontline. As far as the RDS, the RDS firefighters, the on-call firefighters, we have sufficient there to staff it as two all-time, as two RDS appliances. It was two RDS appliances before we moved to the new station. And it was in 2010 that we introduced the day crew process in between the Friday and nine to five. Prior to that, sorry, it's a five, prior to that, it had been RDS all the time, it was the old station there. So it was a loop rate at that point to do that. We've had a very good recruitment and retention in the Spennymore Station. It was more difficult at the old station, because the facilities there weren't the greatest, but the new one, because of the training facilities, the staff have got the conditions that they're working, it's really helped recruitment. We've seen that on the new station we built at Crook, which had horrendous issues with recruitment and retention of the RDS there, and the new station has improved that, well, not really, might have improved it. So we don't have an issue at the moment with the RDS crew, the appliances at Spennymore, but that's what we need to say in the future, because circumstances change, people get married, change their jobs, they move away from the area, or they're just, because it's a huge commitment to being an RDS firefighter, it's not an easy job at all. We maintain it there, and I think we will still be able to maintain it, but we are realistic within our organisation, because 15 of our 27 appliances are actually RDS appliances. Yet the latest kind of push from government is that, and from a guy called Ken Knight, who was the chief of London, the honourary partner for the government, was that we should increase the number of RDS and reduce whole-time, and it's saving a fortune. Now, that's great, this is the chief of London, where you haven't got the RDS, and you don't even know that the owners are so soon to get RDS. We've got a lot of experience with it, there's law at the Dales side, we can hear Spennymore, Crook, you know, as I say, the majority of our appliances are RDS, so we're quite in tune to the difficulties with them, and how many actually went in, the recruitment and retention of them. But it's not the hardest thing that we've had about, on behalf of the bigger ones.
Yeah, I have a question.
You mentioned earlier that that would be a sort of like a turn around, like I, we have been discussing, and there are two factors that I can be real to, which are very annoying for the kick, you know, it's completely the grandeur of the report, but we, we've already made it to a possibility that when we go around, to help us support that. From a tax policy view, further, I think, I think it's more, they've got to cross the, we've been working on that, and if we're doing it, we're certainly going to show the violence of the law.
Okay.
Commissioner Thompson?
Just quickly, have you got the statistics to show that on the retention, the recruitment, responding within five minutes, they usually respond in five minutes? So that's really expected, in the first evening, right, if you had to go to that option in certain evening then?
Yeah. No, it is, we lock all our management information systems, we control, so the moment that someone rings 999, and the control operator presses the belt, if you like, to turn out to our station, then the information system behind it is ticking over. If the crew don't respond within, usually I think it's in four minutes, the control of the station, because what they do is one person responds, two persons respond, three, and then the first one then nears to the station, gets there first, then they get the kick for the others and whatever. So a phone call, not going to go down, about three and a half, four minutes in, are you like it, are you like it, the staff is, you know, yes, it's three there, so he's always coming in, he'll be here in, you know, 30 seconds, and the kick's ready to go. If they're not out within five minutes, that time, we obviously have another appliance straight away. Even if they then turn up, they'll get responded, we're always on the run away. So our control pick that up, put it in, follow. Every instance where the RDS don't respond within five minutes, that has to be rescued by the district manager to see what issues are. And issues kind of, because, you know, traffic, various things like that, and I know when we're doing the housing, we're done with the fireworks, and there initially was some concerns from some of our staff there. But the response time there is under five minutes for Spennymore Station, we've got that, that would be important, so.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Hello? Right, you have a comment for your presentation? Would you appreciate it?
Appreciate the time, Chair. While he's closing his time, I just stand there, questionnaires, perhaps people to fill them in, that'd be okay.
Yeah. Okay, we've all been given questionnaires today, and I'm filling in the end of this meeting, or I can have them in tomorrow, if you wish. Okay, we proceed with the agenda. I've got a late declaration request from Commissioner O'Hair for item 16. Right, now we move on to item five, financial assistance, here, fire trials and outcomes.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Remember, we've heard this previously stated, because the fire service office, I asked myself to come along the same lines of something to the County Council, members initiative fund, we've now got the qualification that that will most of the specific equipment to what we're relying upon now, and so I would hope that we've got on the table the numbers we're asking for. Second one, Chair.
Two hundred and second, two hundred and forty, everybody agree with that? Yeah. Okay, so you, item five B, the S E T, the Pilgrims Trust, the Pilgrims Trust, we've considered, section 137, from the roof, eight, four, eight, four, four.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've always been saying before, section 137, maybe for improving our community further expansion, and I'm not sure that this really satisfies that in, and so I'll just move it safe on that, Chair.
Two hundred and second, if I'm sure has or not? Okay, thank you. Item six, grants for senior citizens, members are requested to receive a letter of appreciation from current American H P group.
Who said that?
That's a nice letter. Item seven, education support grants for preschoolers, members are requested to receive a letter of appreciation from Jubilee Park, Green Group.
Who said that?
Item eight, see now, members are requested to consider the following correspondence. Item one, here we are the 27th of October, now stuck, if I look, 15th of October, on information only.
Who said that?
Everybody agree with that? Thank you. Item two, here we are the 7th of November, from now, target of food and opportunity from new D C R G program.
Who said that?
Everybody happy? Item three, here, the 7th of November, again from now, larger councils committee, and our support will be taking place tomorrow, as I understand, lady?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and self-intention later, we'll attend this meeting tomorrow. As usual, the days days, there'll be a host teams and solidly leading candidates, and I shall request councils commission just to vote whoever does best in those discussions.
Right, okay. Second, everybody happy with that? Right? Yeah, thank you. Item four, fire association news issue, 57th, 2004.
Who said that?
As I said, that the current political councils will go at the end of 2015, and I don't believe the council last mentioned this before, but I would, in the meantime, the task to do that, I would go to apply for a foundation to be big or a colony before that time comes round.
Well, I'm sure if the town clerk, if you name it, she will answer your question.
Well, I just, just like, I'm going to need to know to bring it back, because we'd say the plan to do it before the end of 2015, it would be nice if we, when we lose the quality, the current quality council, to even have to improve straight after one of the others.
Yeah, I quite agree, Commissioner Thompson, we seem to move from one system to another, and across the council, lady?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is something we discussed at the forum to the Northern Committee when we set the targets for the town park a few months ago, and it was agreed there that this will be reviewed for the next set of targets, which I believe is in March. And by that point, we'll have the full data of the new scheme, I believe it's still under certain types of consultation. And obviously, we want to remain a quality council, I think we're already qualified for that foundation certificate, so we would move on, as we honour that, but it's my ambition for this council, we try and get that.
But it's my ambition for this council to be trying to get as far up that scale as possible. And that's something we'll be looking at when we give the council vision in time for the next AGM.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Item 9, training stress awareness in building resilience for managers. Members are requested to consider the report from Council Yelga, who attended the course, and making it through later.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick report, sort of for members' information on what I've learned from the course. A few good ideas there on how we can work to manage the stress of our employees and also build resilience in our management team. A couple of recommendations that I've got there. Firstly, obviously, we'll be sending a letter of appreciation to the House. Who again committed a very good course on the day. And Jill, as you know, is the one that advises our performance development committee, such as broadly to this council. Certainly that, yeah, the council are making a statement, a camera regarding the practicalities. I mean, the justice management risk assessments as part of the ongoing appraisal. I think that's something we should really do based on the advice of the state and the course. And just lastly, and as I said, as Kobe's time management quadrant, quite a good idea. With just time management, replacing the old style of starting to do lists. And something that I think we use in our organisation, which should be encouraged in the senior offices to conduct.
Right, time for the council management.
Okay, Chair. As regard to the stress management awareness, I think that this is something that we should be building in to our appraisal system. So that we do review it when we have maybe split staff. We follow that through and, you know, here.
The council, the Yelga, just to mention that here.
That's a positive.
Yes, that's true.
Good report, yeah.
Right, good report. Everybody happy with that? Item 10, seven donor temporary joint committee. It's a look there for the refurbishment and all the services there.
Who can say that?
Same, yeah. Everybody happy? So, so you're all in for the committee, my guy, right? Council for state, council there. And requires.
That's a good one, thank you.
Yeah. Right, item 11, accounts to pay. Here, pay accounts.
Who can say that? Who can say that?
Everybody happy? Yeah. Item B, accounts to report rounds.
Who can say that? Who can say that?
Yeah. Item 12, budget control reports. Members are requested to consider the budget reports. Information is posted first of October, 2014, I believe, Sunday, on this. You should be more thorough.
Thank you very much. And you have, you have then the narrative and the American, that we start to be separate, to. And then we're going through the report, the B's, into the American part.
General, just the clarification, sorry, probably off the nerves on. I haven't seen it till the night, the second copy of that from just before. The attachment on, is that unclear or is it?
It's not, okay. What happened was, it's, the one in the pack was chipping on two sides. And it should have been all on the one side.
Just seeing information with the format.
That's right, thank you.
Attention. Before the reports given. Sunday's post will be reported.
They may be reported, so please comment if you have to report. So then that can be, I suppose, there's a lot of the, the discussion.
Right, Sunday?
And, right. In the narrative part, we've got a summary of the table. This looks at, it summarizes the financial position of the council at a glance from April to the third of this year. And I'm not going to read the whole sort of report because I'm sure you've read it all through. So I just thought we'd let the main points out. In the first column, it sort of looks at what the budget is and what the different services we would spend it on and the recent progress we see. The second column sort of puts up what has been spent to date. And which is 664,000, which is an underspend of 39,500. And the next column looks at what I'm forecasting for the year end. There is, previously, sort of in September, I did sort of see that there would be an underspend of 91,000. But due to things that which we found out since then, which have listed below, the underspend at the moment stands at 11,000. However, since writing this report, there have, we've sort of been in discussions with the consent manager that there are a few more expenditures which have come today. Meaning like, in the forecast, I have for a make 1.7 million for bush shelters. But it's actually, but this may double the amount. So that's an additional 1.7. And we've got the town hall electric storage area, which needs refurbishment. So that costs about 2,000. Again, in the town hall, we've got the removal of the fire escape, which is estimated at 2,000. So just looking at those three things, we're talking about 5.7, which could reduce the underspend to only to about 5,000. And we'll look at appendix one. This shows there's some sort of in more detail of the different services and again, the forecast skeleton. When I've done the forecast skeleton, I've put down the different regions that I've used to go on. Where I've spent, took my health of previous years spent. And what the actual spend has been, such as in advance and such. And then look at annuals or quarterly expenditures, such as utilities or the NMDR, which is the national non-domestic creates. Right. We look at appendix two. This gives a more detailed position of the current position in that community. The first part, it looks at the salaries and the overtime of staff. And the second part, it looks at the actual operational costs. And we're going, sort of, this sort of, again, we're looking at the next expenditure unit. It says 703. The expect, yes, we've looked at the budget. We're over the first column, and then four of that's the budget. We should, we should have actually spent about 703,000, which is 58.4% of the budget. We actually have only spent 664,000, which is 55% of the budget. And we look, I put further down in the narrative, I have sort of detailed the salaries. Do you want me to go through sort of where the overspending, spends has been on salaries? But I have got an alternative. Is there any questions regarding that? Or do you want me to move on to the next part?
I'll just continue, I'll give them to the end of the day.
Right, okay. Is when we go on to appendix three, actually this goes into more detail. The allotments committee. I'm forecasting that the expenditure can be actually slightly higher than budget due to lost income in some of the allotments lots, due to vacancies there. And I've also already sort of promoted the allotment consultant to be there for the full year. But my understanding is that part of the organisational review, that this post will be reviewed as well. So there could, there could be a possibility of some savings in that area. Going further into the finance and me, oh gosh, I'm just apologising for that. I just realised that didn't stay actually, general purposes. Apologies for that. And looking at the general administration. As requested in previously, the professional fees have been identified separately. And I am in the process of revising the budget, which I'm hoping to bring to the next committee. And I will be allocating the budget. Currently, the budget for that board, please, allocated under others. And going further on, democracy is showing like an overspend mainly due to the cost of the fire elections, which there is no budget for. There isn't actually a budget for. And looking at the capital programme further down. As previously mentioned, under 2.5, a lot of the expenditure is due to those projects mentioned in there. Which in the last month, there was sort of, there wasn't that yet, it said. But we've got a more detailed idea what we're going to be actually spending then. On looking at the services and amenities committee. And the forecast expenditure for this committee is expected to be 656,000, with an underspend of 41,000. The overtime appears to be a little overspend. This is mainly due to the fact that previously a budget was naturally allocated in there. As mentioned earlier, I am looking at revising the budget and I will be putting the budget in this. So it should make it a bit more helpful. And the town hall is, it's showing an overspend as the higher, the higher income is currently less, slightly less in the budget. Going further into the duty part, the income from the old weather pitch is expected to be, expected to be quite considerably less than what was it sort of been budgeted for. But this is going up into, to, to, trying to get more, more complete in that area. Open spaces is actually an underspend, but this is due to the salaries, the grants. Sort of, this is mainly due to the salaries areas, but because currently we don't have the appointments in there. But we do have the transport consultants costs, which currently are being shown in the professional fees. But again, I will remove part of the budget from here to cover those costs. So that will should be realised next month. Spending a cemetery, this includes the work which has been carried out relating to the flooding. And one of the community events, the overspend there relates to the grant payment, which was needed for citizens advice view, which there was naturally, there wasn't a budget for. But seeing that, looking back, it is the grant that has been made in past years. And in the public toilets, as mentioned, this is due to the work which has carried out to the P S A and buttering area. And village, community centre, sort of, as mentioned, it's due to the middle store, more buttering and lighting area. This work carried out in that area. And on the operatives, there's an underspend. And mainly due to, as mentioned, the facilities managers' budget is actually showing down there. First costs are actually being shown against the town hall. So this is another area which where the budget will be revised for quite a few months for your approvals before I actually start allocating. In the unplanished high risk committee services, there's going to be a few costs. And it's not expected that they're going to be in the costs in this area. And to conclude, as I explained previously, the budget tab, currently, at this moment in time, there's an underspend of 39,500. When this report was written, there was an out in areas of 11,000. And but as mentioned, there are other areas which have come tonight where there will be expenditure. To recommend that members note the current position and also note the fact that other areas, there are other areas of expenditure, which will be used, which the underspend will be for.
Right, thanks. I'm going to elaborate in depth. And how we view the council changing the number of years on the presentation. Council, right?
Yes, and I just thought you were going to report. It is difficult stepping in to be personally to the organisation. So thank you very much for the detailed position. And I have mentioned previously, albeit with your predecessor, the importance of the cost centers. And in particular, I have asked for the town hall services within the home and functions to be analysed by the cost centers within it, of the general coverage function. Is this something that you intend to provide to us on a multi- versus?
And when it comes to the cost centers, I have to sort of say, when I'm going to see this, that was one of the questions I asked. Sort of the fact that we didn't actually have cost centers. Like you're saying, for events, you can put the full expenditure, the income and the expenditure all onto the one cost center. And each event can be analysed that way. And I think for this financial year, it may be difficult to do, but I'm hoping to do that in the next financial year, to set up cost centers for events and such forth. So going forward.
And just to serve this, to come back to what's on.
Yes, it will be, it will, it will become as part of the reporting on a monthly basis.
Yeah, cool.
So, sorry through you, Chair. I think, I think my understanding of what the council managers are asking for might be slightly different to what Sam G is responding to. And I think what you're asking for, please correct me if I'm wrong, is the profitability or the financial detail of every function that we actually undertake?
Yes, it's, it's every function that we actually have going through the system. You know, to analyse the costs against each function. So that we have, you know, the costs and the income generated from the profit.
I think through you, Chair, I think that information is available, that actually no cost, because all we receive is a commission. So it just depends on the level of commission that we would receive from it. So if you take a function that took place tonight, we would receive commission based on that level of income received. And that's how it works. I don't know if that's sufficiently.
Yeah, but Chair, I can just come back on that. With each function, you have the advertising, you have different things within, within the town hall. You know, the caretakers that are communicating the function. We need an analysis. I mean, even going back, we have discussed with regard to the electric that's been generated. You know, we need to have a more clearly defined analysis of the position on each function. So that we know whether or not it's a viable proposition in the future or whether we should be making adjustments to the way that we operate. I think it's important that we do have a cost center of every, everything that falls into each function.
Yes, through you, Chair, the council are not in a position to report in that way currently. And certainly from a utilities perspective, we have no mechanism of allocating costs in that way. What we do is we have, we've got our utility costs, but we cannot, we cannot allocate them to, if, for example, if this room is tonight, we don't have meters anywhere in the building that enables us to cost up, the cost of electricity or heating for this room, maybe tonight. And to do so would be cost prohibitive, it would be astronomical to start installing that sort of meterage within the building to measure that sort of thing.